Good evening, my name is Danielle Loring and tonight we're going to be holding the public informational meeting regarding the Transportation Enhancement Grant through Main Street Sidewalk Project. So I'm going to outline what our process is going to be. So first I want to remind everyone to sign in off the sign-in sheet at the front of the room so that we can document that you've been here. And then I'm going to talk about the history of the project and how it is that we came upon this grant and this project. And then Owens is going to talk about the process. He's our engineer and consultant from Sebaggo Technics. He's going to talk about the process regarding administration of the Route 302 grants, I'm not Route 302, sorry, MDOT grants. And kind of give some background information on that process. I'm also joined here with the Town Manager, Don Willard, and Selectman, Sam Gifford. So in 2012, the Town of Raymond filled out a preliminary application for a Transportation Enhancement Grant. And these grants look to service pedestrian or bikeways to either schools, government, or other connecting sectors to either businesses or other public needs. Originally, when we applied for this application, we applied to connect right here from where the school is to connect it down to the town office. But when we did the sidewalk with the MDOT administration that following fall, when they came down, they didn't feel as though this project was as feasible, that project was as feasible. And then we showed them the Main Street corridor and they felt that project more fit the criteria for their project requirements. So in 2013, the grant for that project was awarded to us in the amount of $127,782.10 with a match of $31,945.52, which has already been allocated as part of the 2014-15 budget that we're in right now. So this won't impact any future budget because it's already been allocated and accounted for. So the reason why we're having this meeting tonight is we want to reach out to the public, you know, the residents of that area in order to share our information with you and let you know where we are with this project, as well as getting some information data from you, as well as addressing your concerns, so that we can help to shape this project. Because right now, we're looking at putting a sidewalk in from the Route 302 end that is closest to the commercial district where the sidewalk currently ends off of 302 and bring it down to where Meadow Road or Route 121 continues. And at this point, we have not decided what side of the road the sidewalk will be on. And Owens is going to cover like what the pros and cons of doing each side and any issues that will need to be addressed as we go through this. And as I said, we're also going here to get your feedback and understand what your concerns are and where you are with this project. After Owens has finished explaining the process and the different aspects of this project, we're going to open the public hearing up to you folks so that way we can hear from you. We ask that you either go up to the podium and state your name and address and whether you're in favor or against the project and then allow us to know what your concerns are or any suggestions. Or you can use the microphone up front here and approach the board and point out your property and let us know any issues that you have, so that way we can, you know, work through this together. So Owens, if you want to get started off in the process-
Can I say something briefly?
Yeah.
I know you didn't have any plan in the program, but you might ask, "Why are we doing this?" And the reason that we're doing it is along the lines of the Route 302 original development project, the sidewalks there, the community enhancement. We felt that would be a significant improvement to the Town of Raymond. I think that's proven to be the case to promote walkable communities, an enhanced sense of community. I think it's an amenity, certainly enhancement to value for the residents who are adjacent to the sidewalk. It promotes, you know, walking recreational activity, safety for the children, you know, particularly the Halloween sort of thing that we do. And so we think for a lot of reasons, it's a wonderful opportunity for the town. But rather than just obviously jump into this and go forward without community input, we're seeking your input. We want to clearly want to see this project go forward if possible, but we want to do it in a way that would be compatible with the needs, expectations, and desires of the people who live adjacent to it. But I'm very excited about it and I think Danielle deserves a ton of credit, along with Nathan White, who's not here this evening, he's ill. But in getting this grant and working with Owens and getting this far, but it is still in the kind of visioning phase. We aren't at the point of putting this thing into concrete yet, or possibly ever, I guess. But I'm hoping that once the presentation's complete and we're able to, you know, address questions, concerns, and any kind of issues that you may have, that you'll see this as the exciting opportunity that we do at the staff level. So thank you for coming.
Good. Good evening. I'm going to stand up here for this part of it for two reasons. One is I can point a little easier to the map and two, I'm told that there's been some sickness going around the staff, so it gets me a little more removed from it. Again, my name is Owens McCullough. I'm helping the town with the engineering part of this. And you may have seen our surveyors down there this past fall with some paint marks and stuff out on the road. So the process we're going through is what they call local project administration. It's a program, the main Department of Transportation, established a few years ago. And it provides communities with some sources of funding with a community match to construct sidewalk improvement, pedestrian improvement projects. And that's really the fundamental piece of this. So as we go through this, it's really a step process and I think its construction is probably two years away still, depending on-
2016.
Yeah, with the funding cycle. But the DOT has a pretty specific process we have to go through and we're at the very beginning of the process. And it always starts with a survey. Let's figure out what's out there, looking at utilities, getting topographical information, looking at where trees are, stone walls, where the houses are. And that's what we were doing out there on the survey. And tonight, the plan up here shows a conceptual sidewalk on both sides. We're only going to ultimately build it on one side, but I wanted to give you a sense of what it might look like on either side. So we're looking for a little feedback from you folks tonight as far as what the preferences are for which side. And I'll spend a couple of minutes sort of talking through this graphic here and what we're showing. So starting at 302, we've got a sidewalk, and I'm going to call it the easterly side, northeasterly side, up through here, all the way up to 21. And then there's another option for a sidewalk that's along the westerly side of the road. Now, the sidewalk would be located, the road width out there varies quite a bit, but basically it's about 20 to 25 feet in width, depending on where you're at. So what we're going to look to do is have a 12-foot travel lane on each side of the road and a one-foot shoulder. So a 12-foot travel lane is pretty typical of a local community road. And then this one-foot shoulder provides me a little separation to the face of the sidewalk. So from the center line of the road, if you stood out there and took a tape and you stood at the center line of the road and you pulled off in each direction, the curb would be 13 feet plus another five feet for the sidewalk. So it'd be about 18 feet. The road right now is out there about 12 to 13 feet. So we're pushing the sidewalk out about another five feet closer to, depending on what side of the street on, closer to your home, to your front yard area. When we did the survey, I can tell you that the houses on the, or the homes on the westerly side, in most cases, are closer to the road than on the easterly side, okay? The right-of-way down through here, this was listed as described as a four-rod right-of-way. In other words, colonial surveying a rod is 16 and 1/2 feet. So the roadway through here is four-rod, so it's a total of about 49 and 1/2 feet, 50 feet in width through here. And I'm going to tell you, when my surveyors were out there and they did the research, the right-of-way is not well-defined. The property monumentation that's out there is sort of mixed-matched all over the place out there, just because of how old the road is. But by surveying principles, we essentially establish the center line of the existing travelway and then offset it on each side of the road to establish the town travelway. So it basically follows the road that's out there right now. So the sidewalk you see would be, it's called slipform concrete curb. I don't know if it's becoming, it's less expensive than granite curb, but more durable than bituminous curb. It's an extruder, they have a machine that comes out and the concrete forms the curb as it goes down through. It's got these fiber mesh particles in it. It holds up pretty good. It doesn't bang up quite as much as the bituminous curb in Maine with plows and everything out. Even granite curb takes dings from time to time, but it's an economical way to put a curb in. Then the sidewalk would be a paved bituminous, black asphalt curb that would be five feet in width. And on the backside, it would blend back into the properties. Which leads me to my next item, is on the west, the land generally slopes, as most of you know, kind of in this direction, sloping towards the lake. And so the homes on this side of the road set a little bit lower than the road. The homes on the easterly side set a little bit higher, okay? So what happens is in vision, you walk across the road, you come to the curb. When you see a curb, curb jumps up about six inches and then you have the slope of the sidewalk. And then if the land's higher on one side, the slope blends back in. If it's lower on the other side, it slopes back off down into that to blend in. So these cross-sections here, I took some sample cross-sections because the survey's done. One here, section A, B, C, D, and E. And these cross-sections show what most likely would happen if we put a sidewalk on the westerly side or the easterly side. So for instance, section E here, there's a stone wall that is actually, it comes right along the backside of the sidewalk and appears to be within the right-of-way, but we're not proposing to impact that wall. That wall would stay and we would put the curb in and it would simply blend back into the wall at this location. And then on the other side, if we put the sidewalk on the other side, you can see that since the land is sloping away, it extends a fill slope. So you put a little fill and it slopes off, okay? Then as you move down here to section D in this location here, and when I'm done and you want to come up, that's kind of why I'm up here. You can take this and point to your homes and sort of fill me in on some of the concerns you have. And we did locate the large specimen trees all along it. They're these circles along here, so my surveyors actually located those along it. And then they located your driveways and your homes. And then I've superimposed an aerial on it so that it's a little easier to read. So section D here, on the uphill side, if I put a curb in on the uphill side and blend in so that it's quite a bit higher, so my slope, I have to cut a little bit of material out. That's this area right here and it blends back in. If I put the sidewalk on the downhill side, again, I have this condition where the sidewalk comes up and then it's got a slope back off to meet natural grade. So you'd see a bit of a slope, a fill slope on that side. Coming down here to section C, you're getting a little more into the more compact area of the road. And the brown shows, you know, what the impacts would be on the easterly side and the westerly side, and it's much less through there. So on the section C, there's kind of a slight ditch line on the edge of the road, not much one, but there's a little bit of one. And then the land kind of jumps up, so that would simply blend back into that land so that water from the lawns just runs over and into the curb line. On this side, so because the sidewalk comes up, if I'm standing on the lakeside of the property, the sidewalk's going to come over, it's going to raise up, it's going to slope back, and then it's going to slope back down to meet the lawn. So instead of having, you know, something like this right now that kind of blends into the road, you'd have a little bit of a bump and a grade over and slope back. You just build it up a little bit, okay? And that's what that graphic shows. And that's basically the same condition down here at section B, which is right here, just beyond Mill Street, in this location here. And then section A, it's basically the same thing, again, fill the ditch in, blend back into the curb line, and then the same thing. You'd have a little bit of an elevated curb on the other side. At the ends of the sidewalk where it meets into all of your driveways, it would slope down, just like if you drive down and look at any other sidewalk, there would be a transition down into the driveway and it would blend back into the driveway. Whichever side we put it on, there'll be catch basins and underground piping to collect the water because I no longer have any sort of ditches or culverts to do it. I've got to pick the water up differently. So we'll have to have some catch basins and piping. And we haven't mapped all that out yet. We know that'll happen. The first thing is to kind of figure out what side of the road we're going to go on because for the town's standpoint, DOT standpoint, we need to determine that first before I spend any more dollars or money designing the road. We need to make sure we know what side it's on, which is why we're here tonight.
I'm going to talk right now because I'm getting upset because of the fact that you didn't even locate, people bring a meeting here, that I know of anyway, before you even started this. What made it so that you made the decision without the people that live in the area? I mean, who in here really walks Main Street? I do, but I'm not upset by the fact that I have to walk along that road to get to 302. And I walk with my 81-year-old mother. So I just, what I'm trying to figure out is, how can you come across choosing to do this without even bringing us together in the first place? Why don't you stick it back out on 85 here?
Well, I think I can try to attempt to answer that one. It's not really an engineering question, but the town often pursues improvements, opportunities that we envision to be of benefit to the community. And so it's kind of a chicken-and-egg problem. I mean, you have to have enough information so you can articulate a vision and a plan and a program. And so you try to get people involved as early as you possibly can. And so in order to have something meaningful to show you, this is kind of as early as we possibly can because we're a couple of years out from actually doing something. So, I mean, could we have done it differently, better? I'm certain we could have. Could we have, and we thought about it, going door-to-door, asking opinions, that kind of thing. But you go door-to-door, ask opinions, discuss things without anything really to show. So we made a decision to try to have something meaningful to show. And so that's kind of where we're-
But you're basing a lot of money on doing surveys, I think, before you even give us a chance on-
No, no, we don't actually think that, though, because we think that, you know, that it's money well-spent regardless of the outcome. I mean, the mission of the town is to try to improve the quality of life and to try to improve the function of the infrastructure of the town. This is going to have drainage impacts, the safety impacts. I mean, that's really what we do. That's our mission. And so I don't think it's wasted money if it turns out that somehow it isn't something that the community wants. It's something that you explored and invested in and then perhaps you decide not to do it or you decide to do it in a different way. I don't consider that a waste.
Well, I thought also a lot of this information that we collected was during other projects that we're doing. Because I don't know if you noticed, but there were crews out this past summer doing the work in order to get ready for the MDOT to come in and do the paving, as well as the new construction down along the Main Street section for the town. So, I mean, this is all in conjunction with that. Owens is our engineer and our consultant for all of those projects, so-
But unfortunately, I didn't even get a chance to see that because I work in Portland.
Well, you know, I just want-
I'm home till late.
Yeah, well, I understand that. And then I said, like, so, you know, we've been collecting this information in conjunction with some other projects, so-
Just, they need to go, the microphone down, Mike's reminding us.
Oh, yeah. So just as, we'll get to the public comment section in just a moment so that way we can address everybody's concerns all at once, as soon as Owens is done with his presentation.
Okay, well, I'm pretty close to being done. It sounds like everybody has some comments, so that's good. Again, the survey work that was done here, and let me go a little further with what Don and Danielle was saying. This survey work, whether a sidewalk project happens or not, is of benefit because we actually did survey work on the other end where we're doing drainage improvements in the next year, some road reconstruction. That benefit carries on all the way down through here. So there's multiple benefits to the survey work that's done. Where we're stopping right now is we're not doing all the design work for this until we get feedback from the public. And with that, I'll open up the public.
All right, so as I said, this is an opportunity for you folks to come and let us know how you feel. We ask that you either use the microphone up here and come up to the map and show us or go up to the podium out back there. Please state your name clearly, as well as your address, and then, you know, your specific feelings on the project, so.
Can I say one more thing?
Mm-hmm.
Probably I'll say more than one more thing. But I wanted to tell you, I haven't been here a few years now and I can recall clearly the hearings and the discussions that we had over the Route 302 sidewalk. And we heard things like, "It'll never be used. It's a waste of money. It's the ruination of the town. It'll change the character of the town. Why are you doing it? It's a terrible idea." I think most people would agree now, 10 years, you know, 12 years down scope, that it has proven to be an improvement to the town, an amenity, an attraction. It's cited by other towns as an example of best practices, you know, a good thing to have done and promoting community. And that's how we see this. And in a previous community, same thing. I mean, I went back there recently. We connected two towns. We got a half-million-dollar grant, you know, 25 years ago. At the town, it would seem to be, at the time, people were very concerned, they're very apprehensive about it, which you can understand. I mean, I can understand it. It's something different, it's something new. But now, this particular one connects the towns of Camden and Rockport through the arch. And people look at that and they say, "Wow, who thought of that? That's the most wonderful thing that has happened." It's enhancement to the value of your property that we don't tax for, so we don't add value that way. But people looking at your home, who might be prospective buyers, would say, "That's a great thing for children, for anybody who wants to walk and be safe and have that opportunity." So I give you that just to consider. I mean, change is hard, change is difficult, but I think this is good change.
Glenn Geisel, 7 Main Street. I'm the one with the stone wall that won't be moved, thank goodness. But I do have some concerns about my neighbors cutting trees, moving fences, power lines, power poles. If they go on the opposite side of the lake, they got fire hydrants that prop up in the middle of the sidewalks. People are going to be losing trees. I know there's concern of several people. I see you addressed the aspects of the driveways, making sure that people still have access to the yards. But again, if you do it on the opposite side of the road, people are going to be losing some of the driveways. There's a couple of them that are very steep and to cut out for a sidewalk, five feet, you're going to make it even steeper. The other side of the, the lakeside of the road, you're going to be in people's front doors, right in their windows. People walking by will obviously be able to look right in the windows. My other concern, big concern, is ATV traffic. ATVs frequent Main Street a lot. If you spend some time down there, you'll see a lot of ATVs, illegal dirt bikes, going up and down the road. Putting a sidewalk down there is going to open it up to them. That's already been a proven fact on the other sidewalks. The other sidewalks are great attraction. They're great. The streetlights make them look nice, the flags, the wreaths. I have no objection to those, they look nice. But they still attract the ATVs and dirt bikes. And you can ask Nathan about that, he stopped many of them on sidewalks. So that is a major concern. You can't keep them off. The other thing to think about, we thought about, is what happens if the school department closes down Jordan Small and moves the library up to Jordan Small? You know, the sidewalk's going to be for naught? I mean, that's one of the objects of putting a sidewalk in, is for the library, access to the library. We can sit in our front yard on a summer day and count on one hand the number of people that use the sidewalks down to the beach in a given day. We can use two hands in a given week. Most people use the opposite side of the road to run, jog, and walk on, so they can make a complete circle around. They don't even use a sidewalk. There's more people on the opposite side of the road from the sidewalk. Those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Bruce, PV, 35 Main Street. First of all, does anybody here want this sidewalk? You do? Okay, then there's a place you can put it, in front of that place. I'm sorry, I don't know you guys. I'm retired, I'm looking out the window all the time. And I see very little, very little foot traffic. But like Lynn said, I do see four-wheeler traffic right down the street, plus snowmobile as well. And nobody ever seems to catch them. Also, what is the cost to the town so far for this project that we didn't want? You got that, Don?
Well, first of all, we don't know, the town doesn't, I mean, I get that you don't want it and there may be some folks in the room who don't want it, but we don't know the town doesn't want it. And so I can get an accounting. Do we have a, do you have an estimate of your engineering fees? I mean, I didn't bring that with me.
I think so far, we've sent about $3,000.
$3,000. And you said the town match was $30,000?
$32,000.
$32,000.
But from the federal government, we'll get about almost $128.
Yeah, it's fairly de minimis money, but nothing is free today. I mean, if you see the drawing, you see the work that went into producing that, nothing's free.
Well, I think it's going to generate some expense, like they'll probably plow it like they do the one on 302.
We will plow it, yeah.
So there's an extra expense. Somebody mentioned property marker. Well-
Property markers?
Property line marker. Well, I have a hydrant on my front lawn, which I thought would be good for my insurance, but it doesn't matter anymore, I guess. But when they put that in, I lost my property marker and they never replaced it. So if you do this, I'm going to lose the other one as well. Yeah, that's about it. Now, so you can't tell us tonight what your ideas are, which side and all that? That's why I thought we were here.
Well, we could have done that, but we want to get feedback. I mean, we have a preference, but we want to get feedback and see what you think.
Uh-huh. Okay, so this only goes to Meadow Road?
Well-
At this time.
At this time, but I mean, the idea, I mean, there are people, this has sort of died out to some degree too, but, you know, a decade or more ago, there was talk of, and you know, somebody made the point, maybe Glenn made the point, about the idea of the library possibly going to the school. I mean, that is a possibility, but it's not something that's on the front burner for sure. But there's also been talk, and this may not make anybody happy either, but there was talk years ago about the idea of aggregating town properties and maybe building a community center, you know, a library, town office center on the former Public Works, Public Safety Site, you know, the 51 Main Street site. We tried to acquire that unsuccessfully. We lost by a handful of votes at a special town meeting. But we had an idea of building sort of a village center, a community center, with the, you know, town office, library, rec center kind of thing right there in the village. So I don't think that this would be the end of the idea of trying to, you know, build community. I could see the sidewalk continuing along to the fire station. You know, I could see it continuing up by the library. And I don't think the library's going anywhere anytime soon, but one never knows. But the idea, I mean, Raymond doesn't really have a kind of a center, a village center, so it's kind of trying to create that sort of feeling and I think that's a positive thing.
Also, the scope of this grant only covers along State Road, so it's starting at the beginning point of where 121 picks up on 302 and follows it down until it transitions into Meadow Road, so.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment. So it goes there and then it stops. And I guess the walkers turn around and go back. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ashley O'Brien. I am 42 Main Street.
And we have a home that is very close to the street. So if the sidewalk goes to our home, I was actually at my house when the surveyor was there, and he was touching my house. So I'm thinking that, you know, that we might be one of the people that you can reach out and touch our house. But my husband and I are both very in favor of the sidewalk because we have small children, and we see that there is a speed problem on Main Street that is not very well enforced. And I'm sure many of my neighbors hear people speeding up and down in the night, in the afternoon. It's a problem. And I'm also a runner, so I'm out on Main Street, and I have felt the need to dodge out of the street in order to avoid some cars at some point. So I feel like the sidewalk is a very beneficial thing to our community because I do things like walk my children up to the playground. We walk to the mosquito, we walk to Good Life. So we do hook up with that 302 sidewalk. And I have noticed that there's just not, there's not even really like a shoulder to walk on, on our Main Street. So I do think that that's beneficial, and I say that at the same point of, at the same time realizing that we would be giving up some of our property at the same time to allow for a sidewalk on our side of the street because we are so close. But I think, and what I would hope for, is that the town would be seeing other problems that exist. For instance, the drainage issue. From 302 to Meadow Road, there's no drainage on our, on our end of the street. And it's a real problem for the people that live on the lower half of the road because we have runoff coming on. And then especially the homes that are near the end of Mills Street, we have the runoff coming off of Mills Street right into our properties. So I would hope that maybe, at the same time that this project is happening, that drainage is being addressed, and that's one of my questions. Is it being addressed? Is that something that is being thought of at the same time?
Sure answer is yes.
Great.
Once I create, I recognize, having walked this and looked at it, that, you know, I suspected there's some drainage issues on the lake side. So when the curbing goes in, there'll be catch basins, underground piping. That will collect the surface water before it goes on your property. The curbing tends to intercept the water that normally would go over, and it runs across, and then gets collected in catch basins. And we haven't looked at how we're gonna pipe it yet, where our outfalls are. It all depends on what side of the street the sidewalk goes on, but drainage will be addressed, it has to be. DOT wouldn't let me build it without doing that.
Great. Well, those are most of my, that's my main question. But then my other question is, are you allowed to tell us what side you guys are leaning towards?
Yeah.
You know, for me, I look at things, when I look at these projects, I tend to look at it more objectively from drainage standpoints, from impacts on properties, impacts on utilities, street trees, things like that, and how much land grading there is, what sort of impacts I have on adjacent properties. So when I look at that, and I line up my columns, and I put pluses and checks in each one, to me, the side that makes the most logical sense is on the easterly side.
And then my last question. If you put in the sidewalk, is there, have you guys considered moving the road as well? Or will the road remain where it is, and the sidewalk will be added on?
The road will remain where it is, and then we would add the sidewalk onto it. To move the road isn't really within the budgeting or the funding for it. And it's pretty tight in through there, so we have to be a little careful on that because there's utilities and other things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
You said you're leaning towards the east side. I happen to live on the east side. And so doesn't, or so does, I guess that's proper English, my leach field. Now what happens when you start digging up and get into my leach field? What do you do about that?
So you're, I'm sorry, I don't remember which house you were. But if you go out there right now, you have the edge of the pavement, and then there's kind of a gravel shoulder and some ditches, and we're really working within that area. So if your leach field is in the public right of way, you know, it would be important for you, and I'd be glad to meet you out there so you can show me exactly where your leach field is, and we can determine if there would be any impacts to it.
Yeah.
I think you're suggesting it's in the public right of way?
Bring a shovel, I'll be glad to go down there. In fact, you can do around, does places. How about the telephone poles and the hydrants?
Yep. So the hydrants and the telephone poles, as part of the project, we will go through a utility coordination process with all the utilities, at which time we would determine whether or not we have to move poles, whether the utility companies need to move poles or not. Hydrants, if the, and we located the hydrants. There is one hydrant that is right in the middle of the sidewalk, so Portland Water District would be contacted to move that hydrant outside of the sidewalk.
On the house side?
On the house side, that's correct.
Now, should this happen, are you going to eliminate my other property marker?
Well, I, yeah, I heard you loud and clear on that one. So I can't speak for what the Portland Water District did when they came up through, but when we, one reason why we went out, when they did, this road has never been surveyed. We can't find any record documentation that was ever surveyed. And usually what the Portland Water District does, when they come up through, they generally design based on very limited information. So I can't speak to what they did coming up through there. But when we do it, we survey it, we locate it, we locate all the found monumentation we can find out there. We have public meetings like this to hear back from the public. And then when we go into construction, there's specific requirements by, within the bidding documents, that if the contractors are going to disturb monumentation, whether it's an iron pen or granite monumentation, that that monumentation be reset. Now, if it happens to be in the middle of the sidewalk, it might be reset as a spike or rebar driven flush with the sidewalk, or it might even be a granite monument. I can't tell you what it would be at this point. But that is part of the process.
I would say, as much as I like to beat up on the Portland Water District, they really had nothing to do with that. It was the town who hired an independent contractor from Massachusetts that put in the water line. And so, of course, we obviously strive, and we had Gore Palmer Consulting Engineers, not Svego Technics, but another highly competent engineering firm that was overseeing that project. So if we eliminated inadvertently, or, you know, somebody's property marker, that's a bad thing. And I don't know how that happened, that was, you know, a long time ago. But certainly that's not our intention. We, you know, if we'd known about that, we would have restored it. If there's some way to relocate that pin and restore it, we'll restore it now. And so I, my intention would be not to disturb people's property markers, but if we can help to delineate them and make things clearer, let's do that. But that would not be the district, that would have been the town who put the line in. Then we turn it over to the district, another project that we were able to get a grant for years ago. But, so the town, the town with Gore Palmer is an independent contractor who put the line in.
Do you have any other comments?
My name is Judy Geisel, I'm at Seven Main Street. And I would like a comment that Mr. Willard made when we first started, that this was gonna be done for Halloween.
No, no, it shouldn't.
If you've ever been on Main Street for Halloween, it's not gonna matter if there's sidewalks on both sides of the street. What happens down there on Halloween, and we all know. Both sides of the streets is used for a parking lot. Hundreds and hundreds of kids come from every place but Raymond. Are we doing sidewalks for those kids on Halloween?
No, I was trying to tell you, from, you know, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't trying to say this was gonna solve the Halloween issue. What I was saying was that it can't hurt, it's a safety issue. And so, it can't, it can't make things worse than they are now. And arguably, it could make things better. I mean, having brought my own child down there, you know, ten years ago, and, you know, it's not a proposition that, in the, before, in those days, we had traffic moving, and it was not safe. And I think a sidewalk would be an improvement, wouldn't be the solution. I agree, people are all over the place, both sides of the road, everywhere.
And I would like to make a comment on what Sherri said when she was trying to say about how people seldomly use our road. We know there are a few walkers. And I invite you, just like I did, Mr. PV, to come sit in our front yard and watch what happens on Main Street. There are speeders, and you take your own life in your hands when you walk on that street. And I don't understand how sidewalks are going to make a difference. And I just think that sidewalks could be put someplace else. That's my opinion. And I wanted to thank you for inviting us and having this meeting so that we could say how we feel. But I, for one, do not want sidewalks, even if it improves how the street looks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherri Clark, and I'm on Thirty-Sixth Main Street. And I'm very concerned about the side that I live on because my house is right on the road now. As far as people having children, young children, I brought my children up there. They were taught not to go near the road. Yes, a walkway would have been nice years ago if everything would have been moved ahead of time so that, you know, your streetlights, your whatever, were put in place before the sidewalks were. I just feel like you're gonna be spending a lot more money than you think just to put it in. There isn't that many people that walk it now. Like I said, I myself walk it with my eighty-one-year-old mother. We just walk slow, and we're very careful on that road. And then we get to the 302 part, you know, that's our start-up point. You know, we feel that we can walk a little faster. And if anything, the town, to me, should have spent more money on building up Main Street, leveling it off a little bit more. But as far as putting sidewalks in, I just, the ATVs that go through there tearing up the road, and the snowmobiles, and the people that speed down that road, and it's never twenty-five. I don't ever see anybody go twenty-five down through there. You know, I hate to see a lot of money spent on something that, I mean, most of us people have been there for years. And, you know, it's a nice little village. And like I said, a walkway would have been nice if years ago they would have prepared for it. But it's an old village. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly Williams, I live at Thirty-Two Main Street, and I walk all the time. And I think if there is going to be a sidewalk, the east side would be the best because there's really no place to walk to on the west side, and you would connect to the 302. But I think speed is something very dangerous in Raymond. And I don't think being on a sidewalk makes you safe because my house was hit by a car. And I live right across from the church, twenty-five miles an hour straightaway, so I think you've gotta be ready to hop off of the sidewalk, too.
Thank you.
Hi.
Civil Cunningham, Sixty-Three Main Street. I just wonder if there's not like a compromise we're missing here, where, you know, you said the sidewalk would be, was it like five feet? Like, is it possible just to widen the road by two feet? And then, you know, the people that do walk, which is not very many, have a little bit more room, but then it's not messing everybody's stuff up? I don't know, is that? And then like also, the big thing about the drainage, and everybody's worried about their trees, which, myself included, I like trees, so.
We would... So my inclination would be that we would lose our DOT funding. DOT requires, having been through these sidewalk projects in the past, I've tried some at-grade sidewalks because of physical constraints, and they wouldn't allow for that. They want a vertical curb, which they consider, and, you know, these aren't my words, they consider a non-mountable curb, so it's a vertical curb. And that's how they, they wanna create that physical barrier between the sidewalk and the street so that it promotes pedestrian safety. I mean, I suppose somebody wants to try, they can drive up over a sidewalk. But, but it does, but they won't, they typically won't allow me to do that.
Okay.
The other important point that just occurs to me is that when you add an expansive asphalt, it creates a situation where the perception is more wide-open space, hence more speed. When you put the sidewalks in and the curbing, even though there's, you know, the addition of the sidewalk, it has more of a traffic calming effect. It, you have more of a confined feeling, and more of a closed-in feeling. And so actually, it slows traffic down, as opposed to adding asphalt, which speeds people up.
I agree with that, that's probably true.
So that's, it's an interesting phenomenon, so it's kind of an optical illusion, if you will, sort of thing. You know, even in the sidewalk that I did, you know, twenty-five years ago, in a very well-traveled road between those two towns, and it was set back somewhat, there was a grass buffer, but it had a real traffic calming effect, which was unexpected benefit.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sure how fine about the trees, are you guys preserving the trees?
Well, we'll preserve what we can. So let me, let me show you quickly on this. We've located the large specimen trees along this side of the road here. There's, there's one tree that's, let's see, what's the address on this? Actually, I think there, somebody, I heard PV, is it somebody? You?
You're hitting the lottery, Tony.
So there's one tree that's very close to the, to the road right here. Then as you come down through, it looks like the rest of the trees on the easterly side would be preserved. Now, on the westerly side, because you're much closer to the road, there's a couple of trees here, one by a culvert outlet, which I'd suspect would have to go no matter what because if we replace the culvert, we gotta be able to replace the drainage through there. There's another tree that comes up through here that's almost right on the sidewalk, by Forty-Two Main Street. There's a couple of trees, looks like one, but one or both may, one, one may have to go by Forty Main Street. Then coming up through, when you get up to Thirty-Two Main Street, there's one tree that's probably, that's you?
You skipped Thirty-Sixth, which I have two trees right out.
The way the plan's drawn here, it looks like those trees are fine. Well, I mean, as far as us disturbing them from construction.
They wouldn't be. They're right, they're right past my house, and my house is right out by the road.
Well...
There's no way they would be, they'd have to take them down.
They were surveyed.
If not, they would be damaged, the roots would be damaged.
So tell about Thirty-Two.
So there's a tree here, there's one tree right here at Thirty-Two that looks like we would probably be into that tree. Coming up through, there's another tree here at, I guess it's Twenty-Eight Main Street, that's pretty close, and another one at Twenty-Six, and then the rest of them.
One at Twenty-Six, that's two, right?
Yeah, there's two, but one, okay, let me rephrase. What I'm telling you, the ones that appears at this point might be impacted by construction. I'm not counting the number of trees on everybody's property. I'm simply pointing out to you the specimen trees that were surveyed, located, and what appear to be in the sidewalk, okay? I'd be more than happy to stand here and count all the trees on everybody's property if you want to stay to do that, but I'm trying to be a little more efficient with the time. Which one?
Forty-Five Main.
Forty-Five Main, all right, let's work it. Hang on, we're forty-five, there's Forty-Two. You must be on the other side. These right here?
These are massive trees.
Well, that one's out of the way, that one's behind, that's out of the way, that one's out. Right, oh, down, down here? These three trees, oh, they're way off the edge of, they're way outside of our construction envelope. There's the trees right there, and there's where the sidewalk goes. This scale is one inch equals forty feet, so it's probably fifteen feet or so to those trees. This scale is one inch equals forty feet, so it's probably fifteen feet or so to those trees.
What happens if someone wants to put a driveway in after?
Well, that would be up to the Public Works Director in the town to look at it. What we try to do through here is preserve the driveways that are in there now. And if there are concerns about driveways, it's a discussion that should be brought, you know, bring up to us now. If it's afterwards, it would be, have to be a discussion with the Public Works Director, with Nathan.
What's the planning for the mailboxes?
Oh, well, mailboxes that get disturbed would be reset.
Reset where?
Where? So the cops can take them down?
Those mailbo, if it's on the side of the sidewalk, typically they'd be reset behind the sidewalk.
So how's the mailman's gonna get to that?
I get trouble with the mailman now from coming on.
These are all, these are all-
Maybe the mailbox will go on the other side.
Yeah, these are all engineering concerns that I'm confident can be worked out, but, and if we get to that phase, then we talk about the specific issues relative to each property, engineering issues. And there are lots of places with sidewalks and the people all get mail, you know, and that, everything works. I mean, it's, has to be engineered. You can't answer all the questions this evening. And then I, I'm gonna go out on a limb here. No pun intended, but, you know, trees, like everything else, I mean, and no one wants to cut down large trees. Certainly, I don't want to cut down large trees. But if we have some tree disturbance and, you know, and there's a necessity to take down a tree or two, I, I would commit, somehow we would find the funds to, if people were interested in a replanting of trees, shade trees, otherwise, we want this to look as nice as we possibly can. And so we would plant some new trees, perhaps. And that's not part of the budget, but we'd find the money to do it because that's the right thing to do and to landscape this properly and to make it, to make it look as it should. And I think, once again, back to the three oh two quarter, we've worked really hard in a volunteer and then public, a public-private partnership to keep that as good as we can, to make it look as nice as we can. And it's become a bit of a signature for our community. This would be an extension of all of that and, you know, not the flower gardens, certainly. I know those can also be very controversial, but, but certainly the idea of upkeeping the sidewalk in a, in a workmanlike way and making sure that it's attractive and safe.
One thing I'm curious about is that my neighbor mentioned, okay.
I can hear you.
What's about the television?
I know, I know.
My neighbor mentioned about the, about the, you know, the drainage coming off of Mill Street. And, and on Gay Ave, we have a massive puddle. They're always, why do we have to wait now to discuss the drainage? Why isn't this problem being taken care of?
Well, we're, we're going to take care of, this is an opportunity. It's, it's a lot of times-
Well, you also have to remember that this section of Main Street is actually a state portion of the road. So we have, like, we have to follow a specific process for any improvements that need to be done to this portion of the road. It's not town-controlled. So any work that gets done, that has to be run through MDOT and their budgeting process, so. And through this project, it will help to mitigate some of these problems probably ahead of schedule from what they would choose to do, so.
Right, and, and the quick answer, why not just go and fix things when we know there's a problem? Of course, we know there's a problem. It's money. So we were able to dovetail that problem with this opportunity, try to put together a package that addresses a number of concerns altogether. And so apparently, the DOT agreed because this is a competitive process. I mean, they didn't, believe it or not, for folks who watch state government, local government, they don't have a lot of money to give away, and so this was something that we had to be selected based on the merit of the application against other applications in other towns. And so, so I'm sure the DOT looked at it in its whole and said, it's addressing a number of important issues for this community, aside from the idea of the, the, you know, community enhancement and the transportation enhancement aspect, i.e. sidewalk. So the drainage is probably important to them.
So I'm, I'm a little confused here on another issue here regarding Main Street itself. Coming from the church down to one-twenty-one, it was all retired.
Through the state.
I was told it was a state road. What about the lower end of it from one-twenty-one to the other end of three oh two?
It's a town road.
That's a town road?
Yep. So what happens?
So that's not gonna get repaid?
One-twenty-one starts right here and then comes down. So the, this upcoming summer, we just sent out a bid package and they're going to, you know, so probably starting, what was it, May?
This way, down through here. I mean, may have seen us out surveying down that way. We put together drainage improvement, ditching plans, and recycling. But improvements down through here, including some site distance improvements down around the corner that goes down by the fire station, kind of a steep ledge humped in through there. So we've designed that that includes new drainage, ditching, and resurfacing the road, repairing the roads. We have a new surface on it, ground up, you know. Glidden excavating was awarded that contract in the fall. Because of paving seasons, we decided to hold it off until the spring. That work will actually start this spring by glidden excavating. We had the option to actually do the work and then hold off on the surface, hold off on the paving until next, until this coming year. But when I tear up a road and it's gravel all winter long, it can be kind of a maintenance issue, so we decided to wait till the spring. But that whole section's gonna be redone.
And, and that section is being paid for through the two million dollar bond that was just, was acquired, I believe, three years ago at this point. So, you know, that's why we're able to fund that portion is because of all of that, you know what I mean? So, you know, we're trying to address some other issues while getting some other amenities at the same time and also using federal funds. So they said if we were to go, first of all, they said that that portion's a state, so we would have a bunch of red tape in terms of having to do it to a different specification and we'd probably have to have higher private inspectors and, you know, to monitor us as well as administrators to oversee the process. And that would be probably more expense with no help from the state, so, you know. We're, we're trying to get, you know, utilize an opportunity for the town to, you know, improve space, I mean, safety, aesthetics, as well as, you know, improve some other concerns that are being addressed, so, at a, you know, I mean, a fraction of the cost that we would normally get.
One thing that should be written down by the panel, I feel, is that enough people here have stated the speed, which these cars go up and down that road. And I know for a fact, yeah, if you have somebody there ticketing and people on a regular basis, it will stop.
Well, we can, we'll reach out to Cumberland County and do our part to, you know, help to, to see what we can do.
Comment from Cumberland County Sheriff's. They sit down there at the church on Main Street and people flash their lights. Within five minutes, everybody in town knows they're there.
They need a radar unit and something. Speed bumps would do. It's twenty-five.
So do we have any more comments specific to this project? Sorry, I beat you. No, 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 we'll stay as long as we need to.
Hi, I'm Michelle Carver. I have fifty-one Main Street, which I think is right on the corner, so the curb would probably take a lot of the corner, which is fine because I think I like the idea. My question is, so you're, so you, you may be leaning towards putting it on the other side of the road. Is that what you call the westerly side?
Well, I want to be careful. I was asking-
I'm sorry.
I was asking, I was, I was asked, you know, did we have a preference? And, you know, when I look at these roads, I, I, I look at them objectively on where we see the best interconnection of sidewalks, where we see what's most amenable to landforms, construction, drainage, all of that. And when I look at all of that, the easterly side made the most sense to me. Now, we're not married to that side. You know, that's one reason why we're having this meeting here.
No, I think so, too. I'm not, I'm not against that because of just the way the drainage and the land is and the way the ditch is, I mean, everything, so. So would it, would it go around, would the sidewalk go around the corner to the library and follow, follow that sharp corner up Meadow Road?
Well, we, we stopped it here. That doesn't mean that we can't, you know, put a radius around this. That's a good, that's a good question. That's a discussion. And that's why we have these things, because you people live down there.
Well, I wonder, I mean, it is deadly on that corner, so, I mean, if you're trying to walk right there and you're-
So what I have happened to do, when I, if I run a sidewalk around a corner like this, is we have, we run what they call turning template, templates that drive like big trucks around it to make sure that-
Yeah, because the trucks do go right up on the curb and, so, yeah.
Well, it, it, it depends. Like, we could always, I, you know, we could always go through the process and, you know, amend the project. It's just a chance that we'll just pay a little bit more in terms of the town's portion, but we would always bring that forward to the MDOT. But it would just depend upon what their availability for funding was in order to go over our budget costs. I mean, probably don't know.
And I think it makes eminent sense to do that and, because we have to fight tooth and nail to get the funding, but I think if we got a strong sentiment from the, from the townspeople affected and from the town, that obviously connecting the library, I mean, that's a no-brainer in my mind, but, but it's a, quite a bureaucratic process, I should tell you, to, to get this funding at all.
Well, just so that you know, the tractor trailer trucks, that, you know, they do hit that corner pretty hard, so.
While we're, while we're at this corner, if I could ask a question, is, is-
There's another road to the library.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
Right here. But I have a question on this parcel right here. Is anybody here who? That's a business, right? Yeah, there's nobody here represent, okay. All right, that's all right.
No, that's fifty-one. That's mine, I think, right here.
We, we do, we do understand that the traffic issues-
It's the dentist's office.
Oh, you're-
That's mine.
You're here? Okay.
A little bit of history on that. The, the original plan, if you will, of the now-long-ago Select Board was to acquire fifty-one, take that down, and improve that intersection. That was the original plan. And then to, to, because we realize, we realize that's a very difficult intersection. So we, the original plan was to acquire that property and make a, a safety improvements.
Oh, we can talk about that.
I'll just tell you what we, what we wanted to do, in a perfect world.
My other question is, is do you have any, do you have, has there been any talk about the lamp posts, like down on three oh two, the lighting at all?
Well, that hasn't been part of the funding at this point, so.
We could always go for additional grant funding, you know, similar. That would probably be through CDBG or something like that for instead of, in community enhancement, so, you know. It's, it's just kind of like a phased process. We, we need to do this in, you know, one step at a time, so.
That's not part of this project, but if there was a strong sentiment towards it, it's something that could be built in the town's budget process as well. And with the tip budget, you know, so there's opportunities.
Well, that's my comment. I think it's a good idea. I think it will make the properties look nice on which, you know, I, I do think it's better on the other side of the road because the houses are close on the other side, so.
Better on which side?
On the upper side. I don't know which one. Yeah, and I have a lot to impact it on that property. It'll take a whole, you know, it'll take a lot out of it, but I think it'll be fine. And walking on the road should be easier.
Which, which topic do you want me to speak on?
The sidewalk period.
Oh, I, I was going to, actually, the thing I was going to mention was on policing.
On policing, yeah.
Yeah, but you asked me, I, I gave, well, I'm out the cat's eye the bag, but you were talking about policing and all that jazz. We just did a comprehensive community survey. And, because Sam is an advocate for, you know, more policing, but the survey came back with not more policing, with basically, we had about the right amount with the Cumberland County Sheriff's. And so hearing comments about the need for more policing, we do get that anecdotally, but the town as a whole, not so much for policing. Now, as far as the sidewalk issue, do you recall, Danielle, how'd that work out?
Well, most people wrote in and, not most, I would say, like, we had a couple of comments, but most were speaking out with their concerns with the project rather than in favor of.
Concerns with sidewalks?
Well, yes, exactly. Like, one, you know what I mean, wanting more information of them regarding, because there wasn't a specific question about the sidewalks.
Yeah, there was, there was an opportunity to say, don't have enough information, which, you know, about certain things. So some of the questions came back with not enough information to give a recommendation, but I will tell you, in my experience, though, as I've said before, I don't want to, you know, it's not like a broken record, but every project of this type that I've ever been involved with, and it's been a few, everyone I've ever known of, and it's been a lot more than that, has had the exact same concerns, and not to diminish the concerns, they're real concerns. But interestingly, when you look at it ten, twenty years later, it's, I have not seen any situation where people said, boy, that, that sidewalk has turned out to be a terrible thing. That's the ruination of my property. That's been a bad thing in any way. I think, I, I had to chuckle a bit. I was in my previous community and I was talking to a fellow who'd been one of the great opponents of it and he's got, kept, got on in years, and he was telling me about how much he liked the sidewalk. And I'm not young myself, but I did remember him as a chief opponent, and now he's a chief proponent, so. So I think, you know, there's, there's a leap of faith involved sometimes, but, you know, nobody, us, certainly, we don't want to ruin your property value, your quality of life, anything to do with your property. We want to improve it. That's what, where our mission is.
All right, so I saw some more hands. Does anyone want to get up and?
Georgia Cunningham, sixty-three Main Street. So if it did go on the easterly side when you get to the other side, is it the plan that it would stay on the easterly side?
Over here?
Yes.
Well, I can't answer that because we haven't really contemplated any extended sidewalk downs over there, so I don't really have a good answer. I haven't really studied it, but I-
So right now, there's not talk of the sidewalk down there? Okay. It is fascinating because the whole, like, to listen to everybody and that if we're saying to connect people and the consideration to get it to the library is not part of the plan to get the sidewalk there. But I'm one of the crazy people that does walk and run on the, on a fairly regular basis. And, you know, I picked the left-hand side of three oh two because it's one of my safest spots is where I feel when I'm running. And it's clear, and in the wintertime, the sidewalk's not even plowed. Litter is an issue for me. It's huge. I, you know, when I was talking with friends that were doing the five K, you know, coming along three oh two, it's disgusting, the trash that's out there and all the time, all around. And I just like, okay, now we're gonna add this sidewalk, and I don't know how that's gonna be taken care of. I try to pick up when I can, but, you know, I, the Geisels down in front of their house, I think everybody just pulls off of three oh two and just opens up their windows and away they go. And I, I do have huge, you know, concerns about the speed thing. I can, part of why I also run on three oh two on the left-hand side is because then I don't have to, even though there's the traffic light, I can, I, every third time that I come through there, somebody's going through the red light. There's a tractor trailer just barreling on three oh two right through there all the time. It's not, you know, and you can tell people that know the road, they're like paying attention and you don't like go on the light. You watch to make sure that everybody is stopped before you take off because it's very dangerous. And it's also to get to the other side for the sidewalk, you stay, you know, it's still, still safer on that piece of it. And I think the speed is just a huge factor. I'm not, you know, I, I really like Civil's idea of if there was a way to just make the road a little bit wider, you know, I just, I, I am concerned about the whole sidewalk thing and it's, and, and I would be a person that would enjoy being there, but I just, I'm concerned for people's property and that it's a very tight place as it is. And I think part of the charm of the village right now is all its big trees. And so you start to take those big trees down, and yeah, it's great you were planting. I realize they grow and all of that, but I look down there and, you know, you look at all of the old history books and stuff, and that's part of the charm is, are those big trees. And I totally agree about Halloween. Sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So thank you.
Nicola Joy, twenty-sixth Main Street. Can you go over the materials you were saying that you were gonna use on the sidewalk again?
So the sidewalk would most likely have, it's called wood-to-concrete, it's a, it's a concrete curb.
Okay.
It's, probably see it all over and don't even, you know, but if you look for it, it's, it's a concrete curb, and then the sidewalk is by two minutes pavement.
So it's black pavement.
It is.
So it is not conducive with the historic value of the village. I thought that's what you said, and it's been sticking in my head. It's really that, not an improvement if, if we're talking about making something through the village, which is a historic area.
What would you suggest?
I would suggest, if you were gonna do it, just regular concrete pavement, just regular sidewalk, not, not a black asphalt.
How about red brick?
Well, I mean, brick would probably be- But I mean, if you're gonna do a sidewalk, I think a sidewalk is poor concrete sidewalk.
Well, something we can look at. Concrete is typically a more expensive material and tends to be less forgiving for cracking and, you know, unfortunately, here in Maine, freeze- freeze, thaw, sanding, salting, salt and concrete don't get along very well, because salt's very acidic, and concrete's very neutral, and so you see a lot of degradation of, of concrete over time. Um, I mean, we can, certainly something we can discuss. It'll be partially about, uh, funding and, um, an understanding of the materials and how they behave. Asphalt, like I said, is often selected because it's considered a flexible pavement as opposed to a rigid pavement. It tends to move a little bit more with frost movement and, and.
And, and the other things about it, of course, I agree with you, by the way, and oftentimes, what you see is, and this is, you know, budget dependent, what I, what I did in another place was a, a concrete sidewalk with a, with a granite curb. But, I mean, the cost of that is exponentially different, and so it's a commitment of the town, whether the town would front the difference, could front the difference, significant difference, not the granite now, that's, that's out of this world different. But, the, the asphalt doesn't stay black forever. It turns gray, and eventually, it's, uh, you know, less, less, uh, less, um, you know, obvious that way, but, but it is always asphalt, and that's not that unusual in, in Maine, but, but I can't disagree with the notion that concrete is nicer aesthetically, for sure.
I mean, when we're.
Asphalt, asphalt is not as nice as concrete, no question.
I mean, when we're talking about, uh, marketing it as you're marketing to us as being an improvement, I don't find that a black asphalt would be an improvement.
Well, it'll be a gray asphalt in a couple of years, and, and so really have to look at it. Sidewalk, no sidewalk.
Okay. I would ask, um, I'm thinking about that. I thought I'd seen that. Uh, well, most time, it, you see, out on the, you see what they call stamped asphalt, where they, it's a texture put on the asphalt and painted. The DOT does it for median areas. They generally paint it like a red color. I don't typically, I'm trying to think where I've seen color. I've seen it mixed in concrete, but I, up around here, I don't know that I've seen it mixed in, in, in the asphalt. It's not saying it can't happen, but, um, I'm trying to think where I've seen it. I've just, I always see it painted, you know, in the paving projects.
I think concrete would be a good idea, but I know what you're saying about the give, we don't want those four-wheelers getting the flat tires.
Well, you know, maybe you've got nothing to do.
Not that this will help any, and I was, I wasn't going to get into this, but.
Good point.
And I, I understand that. I mean, that's a, that's, that's the story of rural communities. I mean, even where I live out in the, you know, East Raymond, there're snowmobiles, ATVs up and down the road all the time. I can't imagine what it'd be like if I was close to the road like you all are and having them rip by. But, I have in my mind something about, and I'd have to check this with law enforcement, but, I mean, they're permitted, and I know that they're not going trailhead to trailhead, and that's the argument they make, that they can go a certain distance on the road, a certain distance on the road. I don't believe they can operate on a sidewalk at any level. I mean, I'm not saying physically they can, obviously, but I think it's a violation of law to do so, is what I'm saying.
Oh, it is a violation.
It is a violation.
But, but I'm telling you that they can run on the road, apparently, for a certain distance from trailhead to trailhead. So, that's what they say.
The distance is approximately the length of my stone wall.
Okay, I've got a, a couple of other questions. Um, is, I mean, we're talking about a design of an either-or. Have we discussed the possibility, as we've seen sidewalks shift from one side of the road to the other in different areas, to preserve some of these?
The only issue that that would cause is that now you're going to, um, be creating crosswalks. So, you know, then you're going to be tell it, you're going to be creating a, a pathway where the pedestrian is in a pathway, and all of a sudden, you're going to say, "Here's a crosswalk," and now you're putting them in the road, crossing back over and then crossing back, especially if.
Well, normally, that wouldn't be an issue on a road that's 25 miles an hour if it was policed.
Right, right.
So, um, let me try to expand on that a little bit. From a planning standpoint, um, obviously, you can eliminate all pedestrian traffic conflicts, but you try to minimize it. So, if we move the sidewalk from one side to the other, pushing pedestrians from one side to the other in certain sections, uh, that would add to some potential for pedestrian vehicle impacts. DOT, through the review process, it would be a very hard sell for me to, to do that, to, to work around the trees. Um, I, I suspect I would be challenged through the design process and probably even overruled.
It was one of those compromises I was trying to work in there.
You know, an interesting thing about traffic, uh, movement and speeds, there's a, there's a school of thought out there that is being more and more implemented, and, and you can research it on the internet yourself, traffic calming measures. And they're passive traffic calming through, um, if, if I build, oh, it's pretty intuitive, but it's reality. If I build a long, straight roadway so that I can see great everywhere, I'm going to drive to the conditions that if I can see far, feel comfortable with it, I'm going to drive faster. So, there are communities now that are starting to adopt design standards, especially within, um, tight residential areas, that make the streets tighter with sidewalks and curbs because it feels tighter, trees in close, signage, narrower streets that are windy, so that what happens is people feel less confident. They can't see as far. Um, so they tend to slow down. And that's a school of thought that has started to come about. A, a, a community in Maine, Cape Elizabeth, has written that right into their, their design for roadway in communities. So, um, I, you know, will people speed? I, I can't, you know, it's human nature, but with a sidewalk, um, it, you know, and a curb along there, that tends to provide a different feel to the area, and you might see some help. I, I don't know what to tell you about the ATVs, but, um, you know, um, I, I think that that might be beneficial.
All right. My last, uh, question to you all would be the next steps in the process and how this plays out, uh, from here on out. Um, is there a vote? Is there another town meeting? Is this going to happen at all, or do, is the next step that we just see contractors out in our front yard?
Well, I, I can talk as far as the design process goes. As far as public policy, I'm going to leave that to Danielle and Dawn and the Board of Selectmen. You know, I look at it from an engineering perspective. Uh, my recommendation would be the sidewalk on the easterly side for the reasons I've talked about. If, once, if a decision is reached to put the sidewalk over there, my next step is to start a whole process with DOT, um, developing what they call PSNE, Plan, Specifications, and Estimates. Uh, I go through utility certifications, uh, contact all the utilities. I have to go through, um, uh, what they call a categorical exclusion for environmental. I have to look at, you know, whether there's any environmental permitting, you know, if there were streams or wetlands or things like that that I'd have to get into. I've got to go through all that process, and there's, and, and that process will take quite a while, uh, to go through. Then DOT gets our preliminary plans, specifications, and estimates. They review it. Uh, they provide us back comment and feedback. Uh, then we would go into the final, uh, design, assuming that, you know, everything's worked out. And then that would go to, uh, bid documents and construction, but the funding, I don't think, is available till 2016, right?
Right.
So, we're still another year out, and it takes about that long to go through the process with, with the Department of Transportation. It's not that they're doing anything. It's just a very formal process we have to go through.
So, we're talking about the process of going through to completion.
Yes.
We're not talking about any more opportunity for us to talk.
Well, no, I, I don't want anyone in this room or watching on television to think that the conversation stops here. So, you know, we have collected your contact information, so a, as the project moves along, we hit each phase, you will be contacted. Um, in terms of continuing, opening, open dialogue with town staff, Dawn, myself, you know, Select Board members, any concerns or suggestions that you have, you know, we want to work with you on this project. Because as I said, the point is to, you know, add something to the community, to bring a benefit to you, and then have you not feel robbed or, you know, upset. You know, we want you to become a part of this project and be as excited and, you know, see it as an opportunity the way we do. So, you know, you know, my name is Danielle Loring. My contact information is Danielle.Loring@RaymondMaine.org. My phone number is 655-4742, extension 131. So, feel free to call the office at any time, day or night. I check my emails all the time. I want to work with you on this project. So, you know, if you want to see, um, some compromise, a shift in a specific way, we'll work with you within the parameters of the grant, you know, and, you know, so don't just think that all of a sudden in 2016, you're going to see contractors on your front lawn, and they're tearing up your begonias. Like, you know, we're, we're here to work with you on this project. So, you know, anytime, day or night.
This is the beginning of an ongoing dialogue, we expect, we hope. We want to talk back and forth with you, hear your concerns, and anything else you have to say. Not anything.
And hopefully, we go through that process, and, and every, and we come to an accommodation that works for the community, works for the residents, works for the town. But, let's say everything goes to pieces, and it doesn't. It's democracy. You call me up, you say I want to birth on the Selectman agenda. I want to come talk to the Selectman about it.
Absolutely.
At any juncture, and, or there's a popular uprising, and you say, "I want to run them all in a, town on a rail," and you can do that, too. It's, uh, it's America. But, but we hope that doesn't, you know, we, we hope that there's some, some way that we don't go down that road. But, that's what we're trying to initiate tonight, is that, that, that very beginning and to work, as Danielle said, collaboratively over the next couple of years, and see if we can't come up with something that works as a community.
Hi, Mr. PV.
Hi, I just got here. Are we saying there will be a sidewalk? Is that a definite?
No, not at this point. You know what I mean, because, you know, at any point, the town could just choose not to move forward with the grant. So, you know, the, the hope and the intention is to have a sidewalk, but as I said, we, we want to work with the individuals, you know, of this project, you know what I mean?
But, to answer the question directly, dancing around it, is the town could refuse the grant. The Selectman could say that it's over, we don't want to do it, and, uh, that, that could happen.
Well, it sounds like, yeah, you'll get a grant, but still Raymond would have to spend money out of its own pocket, which is our pockets.
Yep. That was approved at town meeting last summer.
It was.
Yes.
Next, uh, who, who will make the decision on where it goes? I want to know who to send the hate mail to.
Ultimately, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen will, will, you know, authorize the project in its final form.
Selectmen.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so, our opinion matters here?
Yes.
Why don't we just take a vote?
Don't you argue just yet?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think it's a bad idea if I show hands, probably just to look at, you know, I think we already know who's in favor of it and who's not, but, uh, we could certainly do that if that, if you'd like that.
I'd like that.
Okay.
So, all those in favor?
Of working.
All those in general?
Of working towards the sidewalk as a goal, yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, wait a minute. You got people voting that, um, on that, out of the street.
Well, it's, it's, it's the attendance of the hearing.
Yeah. And then, uh, well, I'm also going to ask for those who need more information and those who, uh, are against. So, those who need more information. So, I have two.
They've got to see anyway.
And then those who are against. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So, eight to nine. So, and also, you know, we also have taken into consideration that I've also been getting phone calls from other individuals who own property or along this, um, property, uh, strip of road in favor. So, I do have a, um, spreadsheet that I keep as well.
Will we be accessed to their names?
You can come to the town, you can come to the town office at any time and, and collect the information. Yes, sir?
Hi, yes, I'm Jim O'Brien, 42 Main Street. Um, I had a couple of questions about, um, the catch basins. Um, what do those look like? And then does that, is that additional area on people's property that would be affected?
No, the catch basins are actually in the street, so if you've, uh, if you've driven along a street where there's a curb and you see a square grate that the water goes into, that's, that's the catch basin.
It's just there. It's not filtered out to a different.
Nope, nope. It would get collected in piping and taken to a, an outlet that exists already.
Okay. Um, and as far as the state's portion of the project, um, has that already been determined, regardless of the side that we end up on?
Yes.
So, will that increase the, I mean, you've mentioned differences in the project on one side versus the other side. Will the town's budget change on, uh?
No, the overall budget and the town's budget is, it's hoped that it doesn't change. I mean, so, I mean, that's part of the metrics of making the decision. I mean, the Selectman will ultimately make a decision. If it's still controversial, you know, which side, you know, months from now, then, then perhaps they'll have to decide that. But, it, it should become more apparent as we move through the process where we will be.
Anyway, you, we do have other funding opportunities available to us as well. So, you know what I mean, if we, we found that this project in changing it, we would always go back to MDOT first to see if we can get their contribution increased, and so.
But, but typically, it's fixed, though.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then, as far as fixing any drainage stuff, is there, is there any other programs for the state, through the state, that would get those things, those issues repaired, other than the sidewalk?
Well, um, let me answer that by saying that as we go through the process and we look at drainage and we come up with our design, um, there's always an opportunity to discuss that with the state for improvements, but I can make no commitments because they would have to look at it and decide if they have the funding or were willing to, uh, modify the, the agreement that's made. It's pretty tough to do that once they set those agreements, but.
Yeah.
Well, I just am seeing that the sidewalks are a way to get the state to fund a portion of something that we all really want fixed, which is the drainage, and this is an opportunity to minimize our investment in it.
So, if we, yeah. If we put a sidewalk on, on this side of the road, then we would be looking to deal with the drainage on this side of the road that is as a result of the sidewalk. I would not necessarily, unless there was other funding available, be looking at the westerly side of the road.
As we said, that's where the water's coming in, is.
So, again, you know, it's, I, you know, I told you from a, from an engineering perspective, I like the idea of the sidewalk here because it blends in. That doesn't mean that we can't, you know, look at this side, um, but.
And, and you should, I think, as a matter of course. I mean, we, we know this, and we're very early on, but if we have serious drainage issues there, then we should assess those and address those, and re-approach the DOT about those, and see if there's some type of resolution that can be made with the DOT, and if not, then locally. Because I think it would be, uh, you know, a missed opportunity in extreme if we didn't try at least to, to fix that as a part of this.
Sure.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. It needs to be weighed heavily in the decision to get it on the lower side.
We're still very early, you know, it's, it's just too early to really talk about what we might do and what we can't do.
Okay. And, uh, my other question was, the sidewalks, once they're paved and in place, um, how closely would any, um, improvements of our own yards be able to be? Is there another space beyond it?
So, from the edge of the pavement right now, for instance, um, I'm sorry, which house number were you?
42.
So, here's four. You're for, you're right here.
Paving up to my.
Okay. So, section B is probably the closest to you. So, here's the edge of the existing road right now, 12 feet. It'd be over a foot plus five feet, plus probably another four or five feet. So, from the edge of the road, the improvements over in, uh, from the edge of the current road over would probably be in the range of eight to 10 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
An engineering question.
Okay.
How do you propose to blend the sidewalk at the end of Main Street where it comes on to 302? There is a rather large catch, catch basin there now that doesn't work half the time.
That is an, understood. Uh, that is one of those engineering details that, uh, we will be addressing as we move further down the process. I just haven't gotten that far yet. Right now, we're in the early stages, saying, "Which side of the road are we going to put the sidewalk in?" Completing the survey, beginning to assess some of those. So, there are generally engineering solutions we can do to those. They have implications, they have costs, there's other utilities there, and all that has to be looked at. And that will be looked at as part of the ongoing design process.
So the funding that you're getting is only going to be on the east side if that's where it goes for just that side, whether it's going to lean the water situation to whatever, that's where your funding is, on, on whatever side you choose?
The grant project is for the sidewalk and the improvements associated with that sidewalk.
So, so we're going to pretty up one side and the other side's going to look like a dump. And it really does.
We'll have our new tree.
All the water comes on our side.
If there are other funding sources, I.
Well, what I would say to that is. To work through there, we, we did, we do have sort of like the bond, I don't know if that would be able to cover that. Contacting MDOT, you know, using some of the town's funding sources, putting into the budget and seeing, like, putting it through the town meeting process in order to get that done, you know?
Yeah, but I think we could address, this quick answer on that one is.
It's all part of this.
Define dump, what are the issues? Then the town and the state could take a look at that.
Yes.
If that's a state road, is the drainage a state issue?
It's all, it's all a state issue, but I'm saying.
Should we take care of it?
Right. And so that's the first approach, but so we define, throughout this process, we're going to do further investigations, which will uncover some of these issues that drainage, other issues that are important to you all. And then we can, you know, address each issue in a workmanlike fashion, you know, one after the other and see if we can get resolutions, state or town or grant, local money, whatever. I mean, that's our intention. But, but, I mean, to say that we're going to solve every single problem for every single person, I, I don't know. I hope we can, but I don't know, I can't guarantee it, I guess. But with, but I can't imagine that what we're going to do in the end is going to make things worse. They're going to make things significantly a world better than what you have.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Ashley O'Brien, 42 Main Street. If you were to put a sidewalk on one side, I think one thing that maybe we could all consider is a, a curb on the other side, just because right now the way that it happens is that the asphalt ends and then it's sand and then it's just our yard. So it seems like if we did do a sidewalk on one side, to have something on the other side that could help with improvement and safety would be a consideration that I would hope that you would think of.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, these are the kinds of things that we should work our way through. And in that regard, if, if something occurs to you, if you want to send an email, you can do that with Danielle, send additional comments. If you want to delineate those issues that constitute the road being a dump, send those along and we'll take a look at those.
Is there anyone else who has comments? All right. So it looks like that we've, you know, pretty much heard from just about everybody in the room. I want to, once again, thank you for coming out and meeting with us, you know, taking the time out of your evenings to, to come and discuss your concerns. As I said, the dialogue doesn't stop here, you know, you're, come to the town office, let us know. Owens and I will come out to your properties personally and look at your issues individually so that that way we can either address them from an engineering standpoint or put together, you know, additional packages to find out how we can work with, work, work with the state to mitigate some of these issues. So even if the sidewalk project doesn't move forward, that, you know, that they become aware that, you know, look, we're not moving forward this project, but something needs to get done. So, once again, my name is Danielle Loring. You can reach me at Danielle.Loring@RaymondMaine.org or 655-4742, extension 133. I want to also thank Owens, Don, and Sam for joining me up here. And please, you know, reach out to me at any time.
Do you want to have more of these meetings?
As Don pointed out, this project will then have to go forward to the Board of Selectmen in order to get the final project approved. So there'll be definitely a meeting in terms of that aspect. Owens and I have discussed having more than one public hearing or even creating work groups with you individuals. So if anyone is interested in joining kind of like a, you know, a community action group in terms of that, please, you know, let me know. So, but, once again, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to meet with us and, you know, and hope that we can work together on this project. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.